I'm not the boss, he is. He tells me what I can call him for.
Well, calling meeting in the County Board of Commissioners, Board, plead rise for a moment of silence, prayer, and pledge allegiance. Lord be with us today as we meet, grant us the wisdom to know what we must do, the will to want to do it, the courage to undertake it, the perseverance to continue to do it, and the strength to complete it. We ask this in your name, amen.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
These proceedings are being recorded for the sole purpose of preparing accurate written minutes. Recordings are overwritten following approval of the minutes, eliminating all unofficial records of these proceedings. First item is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting held February ninth, two thousand twenty-three.
Motion approved.
Second.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Under any guests concerning county business? Hearing none, we'll move on.
Next item is the report of executive sessions held.
There was one executive session held at, uh, March sixteenth, oh, what the heck? Then you're at six feet twenty-three this morning at eight forty-five A.M. for personnel reasons.
Department reports the budget transfers for two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three.
Motion approved. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
There are no supplemental appropriations. Expenditures, approval of payroll check numbers, seven four eight 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 through seven four nine zero six, and direct deposit check numbers, six zero five zero three five five through six zero five zero seven eight zero for the payroll paid through the payroll fund checking account for all county funds totaling six hundred fifty-eight thousand, four hundred thirty-seven dollars, fifty-seven cents. This is the payroll dated February tenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Motion to ratify. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Approval of check numbers, two three four three two nine through two three four four nine four for expenditures through the general fund clearing account totaling three hundred sixteen thousand, three hundred eighteen dollars and one cent.
Move to approve. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
The treasurer's report?
Move to accept. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes. Okay, at this time, we recess our meeting or, uh, then call the salary board, convene the salary board, if asked, please.
First item, guests?
Any guests concerning salary board business this time? Hearing none, we'll move on.
Report of executive sessions held?
Hearing none.
Next item, court administration, Judge Nanavick?
So I have two motions, and you see on your agenda, I think they should be short and simple. The first motion is to establish the position of one treatment court coordinator at nineteen dollars and twenty-one cents per hour, grade nine, step A, effective as of February ninth, two thousand twenty-three.
I'll second that.
Judge Nanavick?
Yes.
Mr. Svercek?
Yes.
Mr. Aron?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
And the second one is to abolish the position of one treatment court coordinator slash court grant manager, which had previously been set at eighteen ninety-nine per hour, a grade S four, step B, effective as of February ninth, two thousand twenty-three.
I'll second that.
Judge Nanavick?
Yes.
Mr. Svercek?
Yes.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes. Thank you, gentlemen, morning. Okay, at this time, whoop.
Oh, okay.
I like to leave with a quote.
Okay, at this time, we'll recess the, uh, salary board meeting again until next week. Now reconvene the weekly meeting of the county commissioners.
Next item is the personnel report for county departments.
Motion approved. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
The acknowledgement for courts and row offices.
Move to acknowledge. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
There are no correspondence received. Adult probation for ratification, submission of a grant application, and acknowledgement of award for funding from the Pennsylvania Partnership, excuse me, for criminal justice improvement for the BJA Smart Probation Planning Grant in the amount of twenty thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars. The grant funds will be used for the evidence-based practice training onsite and supplies to be completed by the change companies for up to twenty participants. The project period is December one, two thousand twenty-two through December one, two thousand twenty-three.
Move to ratify.
And I will second that just on a little bit of discussion. Our director of, uh, adult probation is here, and I want you to like give an explanation on how the grants are helping our county in a good way.
Thank you. Good morning, gentlemen. Grants are necessary for us to be able to afford different and new programs, um, be able to sustain programs. This was a grant that became available, uh, which is going to provide us money so that we can bring the change company in and do a training in our department on a new set of, uh, for lack of a better word, guides that we can use with defendants, hopefully to reduce recidivism for the county. So this company will be coming in, doing the training at our office. That is what the grant is going to be used for. It is all reimbursable to the county.
Thank you.
Yeah, uh, just for the news media and everyone else here, this is Matt Kimmel, Chief, uh, Fugitive Nation Office.
Adult, adult.
Or operation. The big ones.
The big kids.
Okay, Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
PCCD grant for approval, the award of funding in the amount of sixty thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars from the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency for the improvement of adult probation services through the reimbursement of eligible salaries for professional staff for the term of July one, two thousand twenty-two through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. The application was approved January twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-three, agenda item twenty-three dash zero three seven.
Motion approved. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Advertising for approval, authorize the advertisement of all legal notices relative to the two thousand and twenty-three municipal primary election.
Move to approve. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Children and youth for approval and execution. Children and youth services fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two. Amended Fourth Quarter Act one forty-eight invoice report totaling one million, two hundred thirty-four thousand, one hundred and seventy-one dollars.
Motion to approve and execute. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Communications for approval and execution. A full service maintenance agreement with Printastat Incorporated of York, Pennsylvania to extend the warranty on the recently purchased HP Design printer for one year at a cost of eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars.
Move to approve and execute. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Coroner for approval, an application for funding from the Centers of Disease Control and Prevention, National Network of Public Health Institutes, and International Association of Coroners to support the purchase of supplies to assist in the facilitation of timely and comprehensive data sharing with Vital Records Office and public health agencies. The funding requested is seven thousand, four hundred ninety-three dollars, eighty cents for printers, eight thousand, four hundred seventy-nine dollars, eighty-three cents for cameras and batteries, and seven thousand dollars for the upgrade of the Quincy software for a total request of twenty-two thousand, nine hundred seventy-three dollars, seventy-two cents. The grant opportunity is listed at twenty thousand dollars, with the balance to be paid through the Vital Statistics Fund.
Motion approved. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Information technology for approval and execution. A three-year service agreement with Pentel Data for internet access for via cable modem for the emergency operations and training center at a monthly recurring fee, and I have a corrected fee amount of ninety-two dollars and ninety-five cents per month.
Yeah, move to approve and execute with corrected recurring fee. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Procedure consideration for approval. Institute a revised Muck Chunk Lake policy, admission policy that prioritizes Muck Chunk Lake beach access on Saturdays, Sundays, and county holidays during the swimming season to county residents. Includes Coldell residents attending the Panther Valley High School School District, seasoned membership holders, senior citizens, veterans, Muck Chunk Lake campers, and pavilion renters.
Move the table for two weeks. I'll second that.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
A purchase of service agreement for approval and execution, a purchase of service agreement under the Sourcewell Contract, number zero three, zero three two one K O N, with Edwards Business Systems of Wyomissin, Pennsylvania, for one Biz Hub copier and printer at a total cost of five thousand, one hundred nineteen dollars, ten cents, point zero zero five two four for black and white copies, and point zero four three five four for color copies billed quarterly located at the correctional facility. Maintenance will be fixed for the first three years with a five percent increase on the anniversary of install.
Move to approve and execute. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
The solicitor's report?
Thank you. For the, uh, Area Agency on Aging, uh, seeking approval and execution of a renewal of the Hospital Community Showcase Agreement between the County of Carbon, Area Agency on Aging, and Innovare Medical Media for a twenty-second advertisement at St. Luke's Hospital Carbon Campus on the surgery waiting L C D screen commencing on April first, two thousand twenty-three for a period of twelve months, ending March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, at a monthly rate of one hundred sixty-five dollars plus a monthly tech fee of thirty-five dollars for a total monthly fee of two hundred dollars. A two hundred dollar security deposit is required within fifteen days of the contract execution, excuse me, and this is no increase in the contract amount.
Motion approved and executed. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes. And for the county parking lot, seeking approval and execution of a special activities agreement for the use of the county parking lot, uh, submitted by Running with Angels Incorporated of Jim Thorpe, Pennsylvania for their fundraiser running event on May thirteen, two thousand twenty-three.
Move to approve and execute. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes. Nothing further for the solicitor's report.
Any further business? Commissioners reports, Mr. Honor?
Nothing to that.
Mr. Lukasevich?
Yeah, just one item, and speaking specifically to the public who's attending virtually, I'd highly recommend taking a look at the Times News of, uh, Valentine's Day, February fourteenth, and read Bruce Frasanelle's, uh, journalist piece on salary challenges hit, uh, carbon government, uh, hard. He makes some really solid points there. I don't think he does a good job of, uh, defending his thesis about ineffectiveness of county government, but nonetheless, I think it's a good piece, uh, worth reading, so that's all I have.
Mr. Notstein?
I have nothing today. So we adjourned the commissioners' meeting this time. What, I don't know if you, you're gonna want another chair for Kat? Okay, you sure?
That was quick.
Any news media need to be somewhere else? You're good?
Yeah, so.
Okay, Jim, hang on.
You got many questions.
Yeah, and I'll call the, uh, meeting, monthly meeting of the retirement board to order. Turn the program over to our controller, Mark Clearchip.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good morning. I'm glad the media's staying today. Okay, first, we'll start with, uh, seeking a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting held January nineteenth of two thousand twenty-three.
Motion approved. Second.
And Mr. Zelenka?
Yes.
Mrs. Svercek, yes. Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Guests concerning county business. I mean, we do have our Marquette guests, Sarah Wilson and Kat Armstrong from Chicago's joining us as well. Uh, report of executive sessions, there weren't any held. Uh, next, I'll seek a motion to ratify the warrant, including checks number four zero eight eight two to four zero eight eight five, and direct deposit seven zero two zero three four two to seven zero two zero seven four six for the month of January.
Motion to ratify. Second.
Mr. Zelenka?
Yes.
Mrs. Svercek, yes. Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Notstein?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, the January activity report in your packet, we had, uh, three retirement refunds. Uh, monthly benefits for the dispersed in January totaling four hundred seventy thousand, eight hundred twenty-four dollars and twenty-two cents, refunds of one thousand, seven hundred ninety dollars and fifty-eight cents for total dispersment of four hundred seventy-two thousand, six hundred fourteen dollars and eighty cents, uh, leaving our portfolio value as of the end of January of eighty-four million, nine hundred sixteen thousand, six hundred eighty-eight dollars and seventy-four cents. Uh, most recent, I always do the Friday before, uh, the portfolio value as of, uh, February tenth was eighty-four million, seven hundred fifty-two thousand, six hundred forty-five dollars. So we're having some nice rebound from the end of, uh, two thousand twenty-two, which Sarah will cover in a few minutes. Any questions on any of that? Okay, next then, we'll go to correspondence. I did not have any correspondence to report. Uh, solicitor's report?
No report.
Thank you. And now we'll come to the investment managers' report, Mrs. Wilson from Marquette. Thank you.
Sure, would you like to introduce your guest? I will. Good morning. That's, um, everybody, Kat Armstrong. She is the senior client analyst on this account. She works with me on a lot of counties that we work with. Um, she's kind of the backbone of getting all this work together, and she works with the investment managers, make sure all the performance is done with, and also helps with a bit of research, client education, sees someone who puts all of that together. So welcome, Kat, and it's been nice to have her come out and, uh, meet with all of you. Welcome. All right, so we're gonna talk a little bit about last year, so we get an understanding of what happened in the market. We know that it was a tough year. We did have a nice bounce back on the fourth quarter, and I just wanna go to, um, exhibit one real quick. And I think what's really important, you know, we always do an update on Marquette just to keep you up to date on what's happening in the company. Last year, we had a record hiring of forty more employees, and I think that says a lot for the firm. We're at about, uh, we're at a hundred and forty-plus employees now. We really put back into the infrastructure of the firm, and that, you know, means performance. We look at that. We've hired performance analysts. We hired client analysts. We've hired some, uh, more consultants, but we're really putting back in so that you know that Marquette, even through, when you see all these struggles of companies through a very difficult financial time, we're still investing in this business. The other thing that I think is a great highlight is Crayku, who's one of our owners, was appointed by President Biden to the Pension Benefit Guarantee Corporation Advisory Committee in November. So that is a huge thing for us. We're really excited, um, about that. All right, so let's talk about what happened in the market. Um, we'll go to exhibit two, and we talk about what's been going on, and, you know, I've tried to put a little bit of an update in this 'cause we did have things come up. Um, so U.S. real GDP grew by two point nine percent in the fourth quarter, and we look at that graph, and you can see that on the page ten. You can see that it's gone up, and then it's gone down year to year. Um, and then we talk about what happened with C P I this year. So remember in June, you know, year over year, went up to nine percent. We had that huge spike in C P I, and we know the market just said, uh-oh, you know, here we go, and the Fed started to raise rates. So we saw it going down, and now it's spiked up a little bit. The market had said they thought it was gonna go point four in January. It actually went up point five, so that's six point four percent year over year, so we have seen a little bit of an increase on that. And we know C P I measures the cost of goods and services. We know one of the things that's been amazing, and all of you are probably feeling this, um, is food is up ten percent from last year. I know everybody goes on about eggs, but it's also, you know, across the board. And then we look at gas prices. Gas prices have fluctuated, but they've been up, and we know that gas was up in Jan- Gas prices have fluctuated, but they've been up, and we know that gas was up in January about thirty cents. So when we look at that, we look at wholesale prices, also came out today and rose to point seven percent. So we are looking at what, um, the market wanted at about point four oh, it went to point seven. And we look at that, and we know, we talk about the Fed and we talk about what's happening, and we look at what we're thinking about a recession. And it was interesting, CNBC just did a poll and said that forty-six percent of people they surveyed feel like we're already in a recession right now. The market is, we're not officially in a recession, but if you look below at page ten, you look at that U.S. leading economic indicators in U.S. recession, you can see index declined, um, by four point two over the previous six months, largely due to weakness in manufacturing and housing indicators. And we know, you know, when, um, Fed's rate goes up, we know mortgage rates go up, and it's gone up in a very tight market. We know that the real estate market in the last couple of years is at an all-time high, and that it's just slowly started to affect the real estate market right now. And it's a lot harder for the new home buyers. So you've got, you know, rates are very up, and they're not as bad as they've been. You know, we've, a lot of us have seen rates at nine, ten percent going in and getting a mortgage. The problem is market value is so high, and then you look at, um, the cost of goods, you look at the cost of gas, and then you also look, and we'll talk a little bit about this, about disposable income. So that first-time home buyer, it is a little bit tough to get in there, on there. Um, we look at what's happening with unemployment. Unemployment's at three point four percent. It's the lowest rate since the nineteen sixty-nine. I think what's interesting about that is what they're starting to see is that there is, um, job openings, which increased to eleven million as of December. What they're expecting is that they're not gonna lay people off, they're just gonna get rid of those jobs out of the job market. They're gonna say, okay, we can't fill them, we're just, we're gonna, um, eliminate those jobs. When we see what's happening with rising ri- rates, we also know the consumer about spending. So let's go look at bottom of page eleven, you look at disposable income. Remember in twenty twenty, we kind of always sometimes go back to COVID because that has really moved the market, has changed the dynamics. You know, people work from home now. We know that a lot of companies, smaller companies, especially in the restaurant service industry, just never opened back up. One of the things that happened with consumer spending is there was nowhere to spend money. So they held on to it, and then they got the stimulus checks. So we see that spike in there that's gone up, and you can see in the top of the green is spike, and now it started to go down. So we wonder what's gonna happen with disposable income and what it's, we see that that's slowing down. If you turn the page, you know, we look at international and the global markets, it's page twelve. Um, when we were heading in and we talked at the third quarter, we had known that energy prices were skyrocketing, especially in Europe, the UK, and thankfully, they've had a warmer winter than expected. And, you know, because of the Ukraine war, which never seems to be, there's gonna be an end. You know, we thought that was gonna be a blip, it's not, it just keeps going. You can see that one of the things that has gone across the board, not only in the United States, we've seen the projected rate, um, hike. So we can see outside the U.S. and Europe, the key question for the global economy is also China. Remember last year, China went into complete lockdown again, um, for COVID, and then they kind of opened up again at the end of, like, mid-fourth quarter, and then we saw a bump in there. Um, and then we also know that they put a lot of money into infrastructure in China. We look at the asset class returns, the asset class performance on page thirteen, and we look at how everything was up for the quarter. Year-to-date, U.S. equities were down, oh, close to nineteen point two percent. Emerging market equities were down close to twenty percent. Remember, we talked about emerging markets, they're the first to go down, but they're the first to go back up. Um, and they did, they had a nice, international markets for the quarter did seventeen point three percent. And then we look at commodities, commodities for the year were positive. Why? I mean, Exxon did eighty percent last year. Um, and even though they're down a little bit this quarter so far, they really did, we see gasoline moving. If we turn the page, we talk about fourteen, we talk about earnings. So earnings, um, have been keeping the market resilient. You know, we had some great corporate earnings, um, and then the fourth quarter, we, the market said, you know what, fourth quarter, the earnings have been a bit disappointing. You know, eventually it's gonna get harder when you, it's more expensive to borrow money. It's, you know, you sit there and you see prices going up, the consumer's not spending as much. But even with that, the S and P is still expected to earn about fifty-three dollars a share. And before the pandemic, in two thousand nineteen, the S and P per quarter was at forty point five nine per share. So that means S and P five hundred, all the earnings of those companies, that's your average. And you look at that, so it's not too bad. So we're still seeing corporate earnings, um, kind of, they've gotten through twenty twenty. Um, they're about, still about thirty-one percent higher than two thousand eighteen, two thousand and nineteen. So there is some good news, they're just not gonna be as good as, you know, they have been in the past. Um, and we look at that, we look that they are actually more resilient to this inflation, um, and also with the rate hikes. And we talk about the Fed and the rate hikes with there. We know they did it in January, we know that they've been very aggressive last year. Um, you know, with this economic data that's coming out now, they are probably still, you know, we expect them to raise two more times, and then maybe they'll just flatten out, and then eventually they'll start lowering. But with, you keep on having a job market that's strong, unemployment low, you have CPI, you have corporate earnings, and you also have, um, you see all of that. It's gonna be hard for them to justify start lowering again. Um, so we're just gonna kind of sit on the sidelines. Right, it's not a horrible interest rate, but it's probably, it happened so fast. And a lot of, um, economists believe they lowered it way too, you know, they went down, they cut, they cut, they cut, and then they just kept going back up. And so that's where you get some volatility in the markets. And then we look at the fixed income on page sixteen, and I think, you know, we've talked about fixed income. One of the things that you have done as a board is you've diversified. So ten years sitting here, we'd love to be in bonds, fifty percent equities, fifty percent bonds, or however you did it, and you would be expecting some nice returns. This year, the past year, we know that the aggregate was down thirteen percent, marking its worst calendar year since its, um, inception of the index in the nineteen seventies. Negative double digits, you, you know, years ago, you would not have seen that. With some of the diversification, you've actually had some positive performance in a very, very tough year. And so we know there's really not there much to go to fixed income, and that's why you've lowered your fixed income, you've gone into global, you've done infrastructure, you've done real estate. Are there any questions on the market or we can delve down into the portfolio? Okay, so let's go to exhibit three. And we look that you did end up on the market value of December thirty-first was eighty-one point one million. You had a net investment gain of five point one million for the quarter, and you've also, year-to-date, you're at, through January, you're at eighty-four point eight million, and so the net investment gain is forty-one, four point one million for the quarter. So you've gained back a lot. Um, you had, you outperformed your relative benchmark, six point six versus six point five for the quarter. And this is where this diversifying, and we've taken a little bit of a value tilt within this portfolio. We know that growth kept on outperforming, um, value, value in this last past fourth quarter outperformed. Um, and you had a negative return of thirteen point one, but the market, your relative benchmark was down thirteen point eight. So you, we've done exactly what we said we wanna do. When the market's up and you're right on that benchmark or a little bit below, great. You know, you're in a positive territory. It's when you go down that you wanna protect yourself, and it's, and that's the most important thing for a pension fund. Since inception, the funds annualized six point one and a net investment gain of thirty-five point eight million. So that's since we've been here at Pierce Park. You've, um, Pierce Park and then to Marquette. Positive, um, attribution was equity managers, we'll look at those, we'll look at the fixed income managers. And I think, um, this is good too, is, you know, real estate. Last year, every other sector was negative for the year. Real, your real estate manager did six point one percent, and that was one of the reasons why you did go into real estate. And since inception, you've put it in two thousand eighteen, you've had an annualized return of eight point five. Now, we know that in twenty twenty, when we looked at real estate, we know that that had gone down, COVID, they had to readjust, and those managers have now re-diversified. You know, a large part of their portfolios are in warehouses, in, um, storage, in multifamily, um, residential buildings. And we've seen a great rise, you know, rent has not gone down, it's gone up. Pittsburgh like ranked in like the number four top most expensive cities last year compared to what the annual income is. And I think that's a very interesting statistic because you're having, as I mentioned, it's harder to come up with a down payment, you're looking at a little bit of higher mortgages. Um, and so rents have become increasingly more and more expensive there. And then we did have some changes during the quarter. We terminated Cohen and Steers Global Infrastructure and added I F M Global Infrastructure on January third. Reason why we did that is we were in queue to get you into your private, like, your active manager and see, uh, Cohen and Steers Global Infrastructure, it's actually publicly traded, and we moved that over as you made that decision. Looking ahead, I think we'll do this the next quarter, is I'm gonna bring your investment policy statement. I think we've added some addendums. We've updated a lot of the investment policy statements, especially for our counties. So I think this is a good time to go over it, look at it. Um, I, there's no changes we're gonna make on the asset allocation, but I think it's good to have an updated one. So let's go to, um, page, they're all different on each different report. I'm gonna go look and see how the managers did. So let's go to page thirty-nine, actually forty. I'm gonna talk a little bit about how the managers did for the quarter for the year. Um, and on page forty, you can see the U.S. equity composite was up eight percent versus seven point two. So you had some nice outperformance, and year-to-date was down seventeen versus, um, the market of nineteen, nineteen. So you've had some nice performance there. Um, we look at G W K, remember, we talked a little bit about G W K. They had struggled in the third quarter. We like them, they're your active manager, they just had two, um, holdings that they felt were worth it long-term. They got hit by some of the healthcare industry, and you can see they've bounced back eight point six versus seven point four. We look at the global, uh, equity composite, and we look at what Dodge and Cox, remember, in a down market, they've done very well, they were five, negative five point eight versus seven point five. And since we put them in in May twenty, twenty, they've done annualized seventeen point three percent versus twelve point six. So you've gotten some nice return from there. Artisan has done well for the quarter, and we look at M F S Global, um, Equity have annualized since September of twenty fifteen, eight point two percent. It's just a nice manager and a nice fit in that portfolio. We look at non-U.S. equity composite, and that, um, met the benchmark. It did a return of fourteen point two, year-to-date, it was a little bit behind by fifty basis points. Um, we did make some changes in January, we added managers Harding and Lovner and Wellington Emerging Markets. They have done well for you in this quarter, especially Wellington, did eleven point one versus nine point seven. And then we talk about the real estate, even though it was down for the three months in the quarter, we look at what it's done for the year, six point one percent. Infrastructure, we jumped in, we still put Cohen and Sterns, even though that we did replace them by the end of the year. I think it's important to notice that for the quarter, they did about ten percent. So they act, that was a nice bump in performance. If you turn the page, you look at U.S. fixed income, and I think what we look, that's amazing on U.S. fixed income, since July of two thousand and nine, CS McKee, they've done a great job for you, they're your active manager. They have annualized since inception, two point one percent. They beat the benchmark, one point nine, but, you know, years ago, we would've seen an annualized of six, seven percent. And that is one of the reasons why you have done so many changes, infrastructure, real estate, and going into global managers, is because you just don't see it, the returns, um, in reels, in fixed income. Fixed income for the quarter did one point nine percent, right on your, uh, benchmark. And you can see in May two thousand and twenty-two, we actually, uh, added Baird Core Plus Bond Fund, and for the quarter, they did two point five versus one point nine, a little bit of performance. They were negative, everything was negative, um, last year in fixed income, but you were down twelve point eight versus a benchmark of thirteen percent. And saying all of that, then we go look at your, you know, your manager fees. You're at a very low cost, you're at thirty-two basis points all in for all your managers with all that diversification. And we talk about fees, and when we look at fees, we know, you know, when fees go out, and we know you have benefits going out constantly, you've got over, I think, five hundred thousand going out every month. We are very fee-conscious too, so when we look at this performance, it's net. Um, you've had some nice performance over the last few years. I think we were talking about O C I O, how that has changed, how it's been able to make us nimble in this market. Um, and that, you know, if you did have a manager that underperformed, you wouldn't have to do three interviews, wait two, you know, two quarters, get them in and out. So that has really paid off, um, for you. And are there any questions on the performance or the managers? Any questions at all on the, on the plan or? I wanna thank you again, one of the things, uh, last week, we added Snyder County. So we're now working with fourteen counties, um, in Pennsylvania. So we enjoy, uh, working with counties, and thank you again. I always like coming to Carvin County and Jim Thorpe, and I think you're, you know, and the question is, where are we going? You're well diversified, we know this market's gonna go up and down last year and two years ago. I've told you, it's gonna be a rocky road. I think we're, you know, ahead of it, it's gonna be up and down, volatile. Um, and, you know, that always affects you, you've got your A D C, you have to figure out how to make sure that you keep funded. Um, and I think we're gonna see ups and downs in performance. It would be nice not to see a double-digit negative year, and right now, we're off to a good start. Then we have to wait to see what the Fed does, I think we have to look at a little bit of inflation. Um, and then recession, you know, with forty-six percent, I personally think we're, you know, pretty close to a recession. I think we're starting to feel it. And I think that, you know, you look at, uh, economics from a global standpoint, and then you talk to the people. You talk to the people living in Jim Thorpe, you talk to, like, I can't get, you know, putting money into the, you know, um, gas, eh, how expensive it is, people are thinking, are probably gonna think, how much money are they gonna spend this summer? When you look at, uh, food prices going up, so it has had an impact. And I, you know, we've seen it around a lot of our counties.
Any questions for Sarah? Thank you, Sarah. Just a few comments as controller, I, I think we all realize that the county pension fund is well-funded. You know, we're following our well-established investment policy, which is great. And the fact that we disperse five hundred thousand a month, that's six million a year, you'd have to really put that in perspective with how the, uh, fund has done over the years, even with all the negatives that we see now. And e- even though rising interest rates are bad, are harder for borrowers and businesses, one of the positives for the county is we, uh, the treasurer and I recently met with the, uh, representative from the county depository, and the funds in our, our interest-bearing accounts are now earning over four percent. So that's a, that's a bright spot. Thank you. All right, anything on your new business? Anything under all business? Anything under further business?
Me adjourned.
Thank you.
Amy, I'm gonna let you go first today. Hold you till last.
With regards to the Mochon Lake Park, why did you always table that between weeks?
We just received, uh, from the Parks and Rec Commission, uh, beginning of this week, their recommendation or input, so we just need time to have our discussions internal.
Okay, and then, um, on the personnel report, uh, the Assistant Director of Elections has now resigned. So where does that leave the county for this upcoming May election?
Strangling, this, well, scrambling for, uh, replacement, trying to, uh, ensure we still do have a safe, uh, election. Uh, looking at our other applicants and see what we can do there. So, uh, happened real quick, so I really don't have too many answers this morning on, uh, where we're gonna proceed. We did talk about it, and potential, uh, candidates possibly, possibly having to re-abort. We did talk about it, and potential candidates possibly, possibly having to re-advertise, possible promotion, whatever. So, yeah, it's really up in the air right now, but it's a, it's extremely important that we move ASAP. And, you know, we started that process this morning by talking to some people and see where we go from there.
And I know there's been no formal action on the director position. Has, I know you were in the process of negotiating with that. Where does that stand?
Director position, not good.
Not good.
Not good at all. It, not going to happen, let's put it that way, with the candidate we had selected and decided not to take the position. So we are in dire need of help, let's say, but we will, we're working on it and reaching, we'll be reaching out to other counties and et cetera, whatever we need to do. So I'm still confident we'll have a good, clean election, but it's going to be a struggle.
That's all I have. We'll knock you very much down the street.
So which one do you hire first, the director or assistant director?
Whichever. We're going to take a job. That's up in the air. Whichever position somebody decides to take, it'll leave another position open possibly, or two positions. So we're still talking to people that applied originally, so still negotiating. Hopefully, we'll have something by next week. Which order I can say really is.
And then salary board was the drug coordinator. Was that the thing you guys have been talking about the last couple of weeks, kind of debating, and finally it's come to fruition of hiring? Just talk about kind of making that position.
Do you want me to give a statement on that? I don't want to offend anybody, but I did in case it actually came up. I mean, this position, I, and I said, I want to thank the three judges, the court administrator, and HR for working on this job description. I don't think the job would have ever came to the money that was given to this because I said we were debating back and forth over, was it going to be seventeen or be eighteen ninety-nine? And I think through the process that we did the job description and updated it, it actually gave twenty-two cents more to the position, which I think was, I think it's all over object, you know, to get to that point, to give the people better salaries in the county. And I think this is one that should be highlighted, that it does work to do the job description because people will get better pay. And like I said, you know, this was the one where I didn't want two positions together at one time, and I said, and the courts, and I said, the judges, when we sat down with him, they were, I mean, they worked, we all worked together and worked it out that we got this standalone position. So, I mean, I'm happy with him. Like I said, it wouldn't have happened without the cooperation of everybody.
What's the job title of this person? Like, what would they be doing in the daily basis?
Um, it would be, I mean, what is, what is that? It's.
Coordinator.
Court coordinator.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, treatment court coordinator.
That's all I have.
James, welcome back.
Thank you. I don't have any questions. Is the, is the position you was talking about, though, is that on the agenda?
Coordinator.
Yeah, it was just to change the salary.
Okay.
Yeah, it was established, but it was to change the salary.
Okay.